Ready?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Call to order.
Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. There'll be no agenda adjustments tonight, and this meeting is being videotaped. Move on. Any public comments? No? Okay. I ask for a motion to approve this set of minutes.
Second.
Made by Whitman, second by Hanover. Any discussion? Bob?
No, I heard your voice.
Oh, no, no. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thanks, Bob. All right, I'll turn it over to Jim on the treasures reports.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. In your package, the treasures report for the month of January 31st of 2019, as I see Kevin on the audience reminds me to talk towards the microphone, which is always a good thing here at these meetings. On the cover, you have some pictures. I want to thank Carolyn Roskowsky with the graphics department. Normally, when we do the books for the presentation at the local finance committees, Pat Butler had run around the building at various times and taken pictures and so forth, and Tricia Murphy was going to do it a couple of weeks ago, and then Carolyn Roskowsky said, "Well, I got tons of pictures." So they sent over files of pictures, and so we get pictures of all the shops, and on your, on your, the cover tonight, we have pictures of the cosmetology and the culinary departments, and very nicely done. The pictures were taken by the students at various times during the course of the school year, so things are very nice. And they also ignored all of the books that we put together for the presentation at the local committee, so they're filled with all sorts of pictures of the school. Summary financial position on page one, we have the cash balances. Again, as of January 31st, cash balances of $4.1 million. Again, spread amongst a lot of different local banks. One addition there, again, to point out, we do have a PayPal account that we've set up a few months back. We are now taking, we are able to take collections of various fees and so forth through the website, so making progress on into the 24th century, so we're accepting PayPal, and there's a lot of registrations that come through. A lot of people bought pies this year through the PayPal account through the website. We also were able to register a lot of people for the evening school through the website, so it's, it's making the lives of a lot of people in the school a lot easier with, you know, the access to credit cards. Our OPAP account at the bottom is $658,000, so again, steady and growing every month. Page two is the revenue for the month. Again, a relatively slow month with the assessments were sent out in November, so they were all collected in November and December, so there's no assessments for the local towns that were collected during the month of January. And we're halfway through the year, we've collected half the money. Again, the assessments for our local towns are, you know, $7.89 million, and we've collected $3.9 million, which is, you know, half the money, so everything's, everything's on target. The bottom half of our revenue, we have, again, investment income, miscellaneous income. We also have our chapter 70, which comes in like clockwork, $361,000 per month. We also, in January, received, received the first installment of our regional transportation money, so we received $259,063 for regional transportation. That is usually about 48% of what our yearly allocation is, so if we do get, we'll get notification in usually June as far as what our second piece of that is, and if it's on target, it's in the 71% reimbursement rate, and will provide us with a little bit of a budget surplus. We budgeted this year $409,000 based upon the estimates, so we're, we're on target to maybe collect a little, close to $500,000, which would give us a little bit of a surplus towards the end of the year. Again, if there is a surplus in the regional transportation fund, we can designate that for use in next fiscal year to cover some transportation costs. So overall, our income for the month is $623,000. Last page is the expenditures for the month. Again, total of $1.4 million. This is the, if you look at line 12, the new bus leases are on, are on track. They're on campus, and the bill came through the door, and we paid it. The cost of the bus lease is $238,660, you know, per year. Again, we make that in one lump payment in January, so that payment was done, and that's, that pretty much adds to the bottom line of the $1.4 million expenditures. That was the one glaring number that was higher than, than most months. So other than that, all expenses are on target. We review these monthly in the, in the business office to see, making sure there's no items out of whack. Again, with the purchase order system, we have, there's budgets, every constraints on all the purchases, and before anybody wants to buy a paper clip, there has to be money in that line item. If there's not in that line item, it has to go over to Tom for approval to expend beyond the budget line item, and I think that system is working well. We also have a, the online purchase order system that's up, is the first phase of that is up and running, where there's electronic purchase orders and electronic authorization, so we're cutting down on the paper of use, and the timeliness of getting purchase orders through the system has increased significantly, so again, we're moving towards the entire school using those, but we're just piloting a small piece of that right now, so things are going very well. So that's the treasury report for the month.
Thanks, Jim.
I have a question. On the bus leases, why do we have it under leased equipment now instead of under transportation, Jim? I meant to bring that up a little earlier, but...
Because it, it's a, because it's a lease. It's classified as a lease, a five-year lease, so it's, in the past, it was, it was bulked into the one line item, but we created two line items for, the leased equipment, though $15,000 budgeted, is just for other items within the school.
Yeah, I know, the, your other stuff that...
But when we do, the big factor is that when we do the end-of-the-year report for this, for the DOR and for DESE, that is, that leased equipment is part of the transportation, so it is part of that cost, but it, you know, for our purposes, we just segregate our regular pupil transportation costs, which are repairs and fuel and everything into the line 17, which is $191, and we segregate the, again, just so that you can look at the two numbers and not skew them a little bit, so...
So that goes back to my main question, I guess. With it being charges leased equipment, you have to put it back into the transportation to get our reimbursement?
Yes, yes, so...
Yeah. Seems like a hard way of doing it. It works, it works.
Basically, the same way as we bought a bus, it's part of transportation.
Right. So...
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion then.
Did you have George had a question too?
You've probably gone over this, but if you could refresh my memory, and I was curious about the, it's a five-year lease. At the beginning of the lease, is the bus brand-new?
Yes.
Okay, great. And does the lease include any maintenance that, okay? And is this eventually going to eliminate the older buses that are perhaps in the fleet, or has that already happened?
That's happened, Tom.
We've, we have, as part of the bid, the winning bidder took the oldest, the three oldest buses, diesel buses, as part of a trade-in, which offset the cost of the lease. So now we have 12 brand-new leased propane buses, and our three newest, or, yeah, I guess our three newest diesel buses that we own are currently spare, so we have a 15-bus fleet currently.
Yeah.
And we anticipate that those three diesel buses would be able to last in a spare capacity over the life of this lease. When the lease, five-year lease, when the lease is over, we own those buses. So we're in a pretty good, we're in a pretty good position in terms of assets and the ability to flip them into another lease or make whatever the best decision is at the time for keeping some and letting some go, so yes, those are our buses at the end.
Because most of the time, when you lease something, there's a buyout at the end of the lease. You owe $6,000 for a car, you owe $6,000 for a lease.
The terms of this lease were different from the first time we did it, so I'm pleased with that arrangement.
Yeah, it worked out well.
What is the source of the propane?
We, we get it from a company called Ferrell, F-E-R-R-E-L-L.
Yep.
Yeah, they come in, they fuel the buses on-site.
Yep. Just, how long does it take a tank of propane to be used? Do you get a week out of a fill-up?
Mark, are they filling twice a week?
We are filling twice a week.
Okay. Just to be sure.
Yeah, that's cool.
George, we're filling about twice a week.
Yep.
It depends on which buses, the buses that are going the longest, where they might be down to a quarter of a tank, and the other buses might only be at three-quarters of a tank, but they come and fill.
I imagine if you had a field trip or something like that...
Exactly. So we have a number of field trips I'm going to mention tonight, so those are the times we use those buses. Let me just add one other thing about the school buses and the propane. Couple times already since January at 5:15 in the morning, Mr. Hickey has texted me, being very thankful that we have propane buses, because they turn right over, we do not need diesels, and we do not need to plug them in, so there is an added benefit. They turn over right away, they're nice and warm for the students when they get on the buses, so a win for everybody.
Yeah, that's great.
Nice.
And also, Mr. Cooney, that, you know, you weren't here when we got the first lease for the first, you know, chunk of buses three years ago.
Right.
Mark and Ruth Drake, the transportation coordinator, had done extensive research with other districts on propane versus diesel.
Yep.
And the preventive maintenance costs on propane buses are, you know, minor compared to what the diesel buses were.
Oh, I bet.
So, and then, and again, that was one of the issues, you know, three years ago, when we set the first chunk of buses up, was the preventive maintenance, because we were spending close to $90,000 a year on maintenance of the diesel fleet.
Yep.
And we were able to chop that down consistently over the last few years because of the propane costs are less, so it sort of offset the cost of, of the fact that we had a lease, so...
Have you seen a increase in the amount of propane that's used with colder temperatures?
I'm going to count, I have no idea how a propane bus works.
I don't, I don't believe so, but probably could revisit that question in a month.
Yeah, it's not critical, I just was curious if you guys might have a, you know, it's like, oh, yeah, because an automobile, a car, gasoline or diesel, will use more fuel because of the temperatures.
My prior experiences with it, you use less, just the same amount as you use hot or cold.
Oh, so that's a win all the way around.
Yeah, it could be.
Well, thank you for explaining this and exploring it.
No problem. Not at all.
So do you need a second?
Yeah. Motion was made by Noel, second by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries. Jim, you got anything else?
Yeah, there are no budget transfers for this evening. Bruce Norling, our auditor, they were in the, him and Shannon from their office were in the office last week, pulling out all the final paperwork for them. Again, as we mentioned before, the audit of financial statements, they're at a new level now based upon the changes in the government auditing systems. You know, we now, instead of counting the pages of our financial report, we now weigh them, because it's, they're so, they're so thick, and more than half of the notes and the financial pieces relate to government standards relating around OPAP and retirement benefits and so forth, and, you know, we've had to been, we've been in contact with our advisor from Odyssey regarding our own actuarial statements, and there's a lot of the footnotes and so forth are related to actuarial basis that those people did for us. They also have actuarial numbers that Plymouth County, through the Plymouth County Retirement, has pulled together. They also have numbers from mass teachers, so we have to incorporate what our numbers are, what Plymouth County numbers are, and what, so that's sort of, that bogs them down a little bit because of the calculations and actuarial stuff that they put in, but Bruce originally said he was targeting the next month, March meeting, for the presentation of financials, provided he can pull all that OPAP stuff together. He has all the numbers, everything is all set for our basic financials, it's just more the OPAP things that him and Kim and his officer are pulling together, so...
Okay, Tom, so what do we do now? We're supposed to, we're going to have a policy committee next month, before our next month meeting?
We can move it, Dan. The audit, I think, having an audit, I think that's a priority.
Bruce is, he's 70% sure he can get here next month, is pretty much what, when he left the door the other day.
One way or another, on both committees, I'll be here saying...
Yeah, I would put the audit. If Bruce is available and he has it done, I would say we go with that, and policy subcommittee can meet in April, or another date in March.
Well, we're on the treasures report. This is a question opposed to Jim and Tom, I guess. Mars is now sponsoring a course on end-of-year, and there's two different ones.
Yeah, there's one on E and D reconciling, yes.
E and D, and I'm just asked, do, do you think any of our staff should attend to one of those?
Yeah, I actually got emails, I think, yesterday, today, from Steve Hausman, I think it is.
Yeah, Steve Hemmend.
Steve Hemmend. Yeah, they're on the, they're on the radar. There's one in June, there's one in September.
Yeah, half a day in June and a full day in September.
Yeah, the one in September is, is a full day. We got the end-of-the-year report we file with DESE. I've been to it, I was there three years ago. It's one of those things, you don't go every year, because there's not a lot of changes. And DESE, Sullivan from DESE, well, they run their own little seminars that I go to every year regarding their changes to the, the end-of-the-year report. A lot of those changes are normally just, you know, like, two years ago, instead of having a lot of just substitutes, they said they want to see short-term subs, long-term subs, that, sort of like, they just want things broken out. You know, they want, your IT director goes here, he doesn't go there anymore, so those are usually the changes that they, the data they need to then spit back to the federal government regarding the costs and so forth. So it's all uniform, all pulled together, but, you know, Mark Abrams does a great job with those seminars with Steve Hemmend and stuff, so...
And I thought, my server, I thought, you know, Tricia or something like that, and one fee covers what up to four people.
You can send up to four.
Exactly. And speaking of that, we're also, as we're moving, again, forward with our Tyler Technologies, Infinite Business Software program that's doing all the online purchase orders and allowing staff to access the, their own personal payroll information and so forth. There's a seminar coming up in April that I think Tricia and Crystal are going to, to, again, to get a deeper dive into the whole Tyler Technology, and, I mean, the software package is pretty powerful. We might use 30, 40% of the abilities, and they're going to learn how to pretty much make it, you know, glow a little brighter, and, you know, so that, that'll be coming up in April for those two guys.
Yeah, we had one, we had discussed that once before, and the big issue there is Tom Cannon getting a mob, so Jim Cannon getting a job.
No, 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 that's all secure.
Absolutely.
That's the big thing, man.
Yeah. We now, our employees can now access their tax documents, they can change the deductions on their paychecks, so we should take full advantage of this software, not just with the financials, as Jim was talking about, but also in some of these HR modules, so with Crystal and Tricia taking a deeper dive on it, it's going to make other parts of the organization run even more efficiently.
Yeah, as long as they secure it about there, that's, you know, we think...
That's paramount.
And I would be amiss to not recognize Sylvia and Tricia in the business office, who are, they're taking the changes of the Tyler Technologies software, they're, they're running with it, they're doing a great job. The learning curve is, is getting slower, you know, interaction with the staff on learning, learning the systems as well has been great, so they do, they're doing a fabulous job, so...
Yeah, I know. Pat stopped by one morning, he said, "I'm on the way up to the school."
Yep.
Yeah, he punched Tricia's and Sylvia's buttons on that.
It's a call to the bullpen, you know?
Yeah.
So that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right, Chairman, nothing from the Chairman tonight. Subcommittee's, Policy Review Committee, this committee has started meeting to review some new policies from MASC, and they will have recommendations for the whole committee in the next few months. Next, Superintendent Director, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very brief FY '20 update. On February 5th and 7th, Jack Manning and I met with Situette Board of Selectmen on the Tuesday of that week, and then with their advisory board on the 7th. Both meetings were very productive. I also met with the interim town administrator and the interim town accountant in Rockland to introduce myself and to explain some of our budget documents. Upcoming meetings include March 7th in Norwell with their advisory committee, April 3rd, I believe, in Abington, and April 10th in Rockland. So this is all pretty typical arc of meetings happening during the winter and into the early spring on the fiscal '20 budget. Other than that, I don't have any other updates, other than you've got some revised documents at your places that had been sent out to you. The next item, Mr. Chairman, deals with the next year's school calendar. This is not, this is not up for a vote tonight, but I did want to bring it to your attention. I mentioned it to you last month. This month, I have an artifact for you to look at, and then I'll ask for you to take it up for consideration next month. This, the document, document three in your packet shows the draft calendar. Lot of numbers, lot of colors, and I'll get right to it. What is different about this calendar is the school year starts before Labor Day. You'll, you'll see August 27th, Tuesday. So the first week of school would be a three-day week, 27, 28, and 29. We will start the school year with a delayed start, which is, which is different. Going to experiment with the idea of a slight delayed start. We do not, we do not need a full teacher day preceding the start of the school year, so we'll have a delayed start. The other, the other unusual item in this year's calendar, you'll notice that December 23rd, which you'll see it's highlighted, or I should say shaded in gray, it'll be my recommendation that because December 23rd is a Monday, that we would not have school that day, and essentially, the December vacation would begin rather than coming back after that weekend for one day. We would return, we would return to school on Thursday, January 2nd. So every several years, you know, there's a Monday that pops up, Monday the 23rd pops up when, when Christmas is falling on a Wednesday. And the other feature in this calendar, aside from, you know, we tend to have, we tend to have very few half-days, most of them are anchored either because of parent-teacher conferences, the day before Thanksgiving, the Friday going into Memorial Day, because we've got that Saturday open house in the, in October, which has worked very well, but this calendar is operating, is going to be operating with one less, not one less day of school, but one less administrative day. What I'm looking, what I think we can do, I think our teachers can, can handle, is we will build us, we will build a 180-day student schedule as per law, that won't be any different, but we will build in that one extra day rather than two extra days of non, non-student days. So I'll bring this back to you next month and be happy to field any questions, but I just wanted to, it would not jump off the page at you, I just wanted to highlight a few of those, what will be proposed changes to talk about next month.
Yeah, what blew me was October 29th, I had to find the directions to say what it said.
Oh, what the, yes, so with your, with your decoder ring, it will tell you that, yes, that's a parent-teacher conference day, yes, right. So that's an example, Bob, of a day where, that'll be a day where the first half of the day will be professional development for teachers. What I asked the administrators was, we can have a full day of professional development for teachers. Do you think we could still get the same value if we said, we start our day, no kids in the building that day, we start our day at 7:40, we have professional development until lunch, the teachers have lunch, and then in the afternoon, we would do our afternoon teacher conferences? So that's what I think, and the consensus was, yeah, we could, we could still make good use of that day, it doesn't have to, so that way, we don't have to have a separate half-day on a normal day of school. I'm generally not a huge fan of multiple half-days. It shuts down the restaurant, it shuts down live work, and so when we can keep those half-days dismissal at 11, to a minimum, it's, I think it's preferable for the continuity of instruction. But, so yes, October 29th will be PD for the teachers in the morning and conferences after, in the afternoon. Thank you. And last item here, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Mr. Aubrey, who can give just a few updates of what's going on.
I'm going to fill the Cody Campbell student rep's and school committee functions.
No backpack for you.
No backpack. So we are coming out of February vacation, obviously, and this is when things start picking back up again. Between January 1 and February, there's very little field trips, activities, things like that, the students are usually in the building. It's a time period when we get a lot of our curriculum done, a lot of our education done, but when we start next, coming back, we're going to start going to, next Friday's, our Skills USA District Competition, we'll have over 100 students on three buses with six faculty members that'll be headed down to Greater New Bedford on Friday. They'll leave here about 9:15, and they'll get back here somewhere about 7:30, 8 o'clock on that day. So it's a long day for them, it's an investment day for them, but we hope to come out with a lot of medals and sending students on to states later in May, and then the states, obviously, we go to nationals in Kansas City in late June. The next weekend after that, our robotics team is going off to competition in Worcester. This is a two-day competition, they are not staying overnight, but they'll go out on Friday with Jerry Shaw, our engineering robotics teacher. They're going to go out and be involved in that, and then they'll come back on the following Saturday right afterwards, so they'll drive home Friday night, they'll drive back Saturday, and be involved in that competition all weekend. Right after that, our first annual FFA state competition happens in the following week, so that's the Future Farmers of America, having tied to our new horticulture program. We'll be spending, sending about 20 people to the state competition, the 19th through the 21st, so pretty much when we're here next week, or no, the 12th through the 15th, I'm sorry, of March. And then the week after that, when we're here next month, we will be in the middle of MCAS, which is different, because it's electronic, it won't be all in one day, it'll be some kids taking it on one day and some kids taking it the next day, so it'll be a little different for everybody, for the students, for the staff, for administration. So we've already started logistically looking about how the schedule's going to work, and what do we do with the other three grades of students? How do we make their time educationally sound at the same time we are administering this test to our sophomores? Okay, Mr. Hickey?
Mr. Aubrey, could you comment, what are you planning for the Skills Kids?
Oh, yes, thank you. So on the 28th, as I mentioned at the beginning of the year, you know, we, we are a vocational school here, we do push vocation, we want our students to do well, and it's a big deal. So we are on the 28th, at the end of the day, we're having our first Skills USA pep rally. It's an Hawaiian theme, you're welcome to, I'm wearing my Hawaiian shirt, you're welcome to join us. So we'll be having a gathering of all the students in the, in the gym, and we will acknowledge all the teams that are going off to competition and what they're going to be competing in, and, and give it some merit, and give it some importance to the students, just like we did the Thanksgiving Day football game and things like that. Is it equally important to the school culture as anything else?
That's February 28th.
That's February 28th, about 1:45, if you're free, bring your Hawaiian shirt with you. Anybody else? Thank you.
Good, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, all right. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Tom. Hey, move on to new business, for the fiscal year '20 budget. The first item, for certification of the fiscal year '20 budget, an entertaining motion on the certification of the proposed fiscal year '20 budget at $13,816,873.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Question made by Noel, second by Hanover. Any discussion?
Yeah, Tom, can you kind of go over some of the, its new numbers, so maybe go over it a little bit on budget? Because things change a little bit, and I'm glad that you put together this per town, well, per district, per student assessment, which is really kind of nice, because when we go to town meeting, we can tell them what our budget is and what, like I said, what we're assessed at, if they want to know, what is it costing for students?
Yeah, so thank you, Jim, for doing that, that was...
It's a great, great piece of information.
The, the per pupil information that Dan is referring to is something that was made available. You can take your town's assessment and divide it by the, the number of students. The one important factor that I, that I would, sorry.
Don't mind me. Don't worry.
The one important factor that I would point out when looking at a per pupil assessment is that because we go to our communities with one number, that includes capital and debt, if we were comparing a per pupil cost to a K-12 district where the per pupil cost might solely involve operating expenses of, of the school district...
might solely involve operating expenses of the school district, I just want, I want to simply point that out. Towns might treat their capital and their debt differently, but I go, I would go on the assumption that if a, if the school, if a town borrows money in order to put a new roof on a school, that debt may not necessarily be counted as part of a per pupil expense. And if a town spends money on a capital item, that might also not be factored. So if a town does incorporate all of the dollars spent on school buildings and debt on schools, as well as teachers and custodial supplies, if they put all those numbers together, that's a fair comparison. So the numbers that Dan is referring to are simply our entire assessment, because we always go to the towns with one number, with capital, debt, transportation, and operating expenses built in.
Yeah, by bay, usually what I have to discuss is the fact when I talk about this, being part of Whitman-Hanson Regional, each town, like Whitman, we are assessed anything that needs repairs on the buildings in our town, right? Maintenance to those buildings is in their budget, but not repairs, a new roof, new windows, whatever. And of course, the new high school, that is in a separate article. So, you know, $400 and something thousand is our portion of the new high school that we have to pay on that thing. That is out of their budget, not in our budget. Everything is, it's soup to nuts, is what our assessment is. That also includes athletic.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, I mean, Whitman-Hanson or other schools charge for athletics, we don't. And transportation.
Yeah, as a regional school, the same, the same premise would apply in terms of our, we estimate our, when we're building a budget, we try to make an educated guess on what next year's regional transportation. So we are, we are estimating a 70% regional transportation reimbursement rate. If we're wrong, and the number comes in lower, then it'll be up to us to reconcile it within the budget that we have. So being slightly conservative is probably the fairest approach with regional transportation. But, yeah, so essentially, the number that you're voting on tonight is the number that was proposed, and the breakdown of assessments, you know, can be delivered in a couple of different ways, as Dan said, looking at it from a per pupil point of view, as long as you have the caveat of capital and debt, and also, you know, in the aggregate as well. Overall, we're asking our towns to contribute $92,444 less in the aggregate than we did last year. And as I've said many times and to respective finance committee meetings, those numbers sound good, some things less, but it really comes down to what an individual community is being assessed. And so that's where, at the advisory finance committee level, it's a, I welcome the opportunity to go deeper into the numbers and explain where the biggest driver is. We had an increase in capital, we had an increase in revenue. So operationally, I think that the budget did not go up, the budget did not go up very much, if you're willing to set aside capital. And that's essentially the presentation that I made to you back in December. So yes, I think the level of detail is important, and as always, if you field any questions, we would be more than happy to provide additional information or rationale as needed.
And to set, if they're really confused, Dan, and we covered your regional district as well, there was a nice article in the Mars put out again on the way they figured the budget.
Right.
You want to read something, go, go. It should be studied for every committee member, just to argue, so Tom doesn't have to do it.
Bob has mentioned Mars a few times, and so that's the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. While we will talk about vocational issues, we should never forget that we are also a, we are a regional school, and the agenda for Mars, or the emphasis, the legislative emphasis, the priorities that a regional school has, we are very familiar with some of the intricacies and the complexities of that. So, yeah, we should pay attention to, that's a very good organization that keeps an eye on policy matters and financial matters that affect all regional schools, not just regional vocational schools.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, that, with six members present and requiring a two-thirds vote, we've met that threshold.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Next on the item, our school field trip, ask for a motion to approve the service trip to Houston, Texas in April. Motion made by Hanover, seconded by Cohasset.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if, in anticipating some discussion, I'd like to ask if Mr. Filano wouldn't mind providing some background. You do have Document Four in your packet, it is the field trip permission form, but I'm very appreciative of all the work that Matt has done. He led our service learning trip, as you might recall, last year to New Jersey, and this year, we have, we have a group of students that he is spending a lot of time putting this together to go to Houston, Texas, to achieve some similar laudable goals.
The Chairman. As Mr. Hickey said last year, we went to New Jersey, and I think it was relatively successful, the students enjoyed what they were doing, it was overall a positive experience, both for the, I think for the people that were building the house, but also socially it was a lot of growing that was done by students, which they don't always get that sort of social growth. A bunch of students that usually would not associate with each other are kind of thrown together very closely over about a week's time. This year, we're planning on going to, excuse me, Houston, Texas. Slightly different. Needless to say, I've learned a lot about planning a trip this far. The expense is about almost three times that of our New Jersey trip, so. Last time, we were asking students for approximately, you know, $50 to go on this trip. Now we're asking them for 300. So the expense is much larger. We'll be flying out April 9th, coming back April 14th. Again, working with SVP USA to rebuild houses in the Hurricane Harvey-hit area of Houston, Texas. So we're hoping to, we, the $300 for the students is basically going to cover their flight down. We are doing a lot of, some fundraising, we've asked a couple of groups for some funds, if they'd be kind enough to give them to us, and so far, they have been very generous, and we're hoping to keep our costs to the students, just their flight down. That's our goal for this Houston field trip. If any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Yes.
The cost per student, I know this is quite considerable, that come out of the enterprise account, or does that, the kids boost that themselves?
They are paying out-of-pocket, as well as the chaperones, $300. The $300 basically covers the flight down. We'll be using JetBlue, and it was the cheapest they could come up with. The expenses that we're attempting to cover with fundraising and donations would include their food costs, we have to provide the three meals, their lodging, which is, it is Spartan, to say the least. Approximately 20 students will be coming down, five chaperones, and there will be one shower for boys and one shower for girls. It will be an experience to behold, but the, that's what the expenses are going to basically cover for students. So they'll be paying for their trip, we're trying to pay for everything else.
Did any of the students have trouble getting the money, I guess? You know, did it put a burden on them or their families?
I have asked any student who wanted to go, that does not believe that they would be able to fundraise the entire, or provide the entirety of the $300 to contact me. I know Mr. Hickey and I have had conversations about looking for funds. No student has yet approached me needing the funds. I can tell you, as of Friday, excuse me, of last week, the seniors who received the first dibs into this trip, so we're taking 14 seniors, of those 14 seniors, only two had not yet paid, and they were waiting oddly enough for their tax returns to come in to fund the trip.
But again, if, I think, being common on the committee, if one of the students or two of the students needed help, I believe we should.
That's, Bob, that's exactly the conversation. We're not going to let, we're not going to let a well-intentioned student be disadvantaged from a trip such as this because they could not, they could not come up with that money. And so Matt's keeping a close eye on that, and he, I mean, we have, it's a good thing in the sense that Matt has probably doubled the number of kids who expressed initial interest, knowing these terms and conditions, and he can only have 20 of them go.
We've had to, last year, we, you remember, we took down 14 students, and that was the number that wanted to go really, and actually followed through. This year, I sent out a survey, because I did a presentation for the seniors and juniors to look for interest. We received a little over 65 yeses we wanted to go, which is beyond any, and about 50 maybes. So we whittled that list down from juniors and seniors to what we're taking down, and of the definitely I want to go list, which was, ended up to be about 50, we did have to turn away a fair number. Some students basically pulled themselves out for grade reasons, as well as work reasons and attendance reasons, but we still had to say, I haven't written the letter yet, but I have to tell about 20 students that they didn't make the cut this year, so.
You know, you can control, which one of the, which areas could be L I N.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Excuse me, Matt, I'm sorry to, I have a question regarding.
We'll come over after this.
Funding.
Yes, sir.
If there are some students that are not going to be able to go, and there are some other students who can't afford to go but are going to be subsidized, will that create any kind of, how can I put it, problem for us regarding funding people that can't afford it and not allowing other people that could? Is that any?
My initial survey to the students did not include a price. I've, students have a pretty good relationship with me. If students knew that they wanted to go but couldn't afford it, I've had students come up to me and talk to me about it, and I said, you know, we would definitely find a way for them to go. Like I said, this has been a much larger learning experience than the one last year. Last year, we could control a lot of expenses. Once you start moving down past the, we can't take our own school bus without killing ourselves, then the prices go up considerably. If it looks like this particular trip is something that was both successful and something that students who went feel like they would be really interested in doing again, or that other students that would come after them would be interested in coming again, Paul Bell has been extremely helpful with the extensive planning that we've been doing, and he's looking into perhaps getting sponsorship for future trips that we could start over the summertime, you know, looking at unions for sponsorships and some of our local building and co-ops, see if they'd be willing to sponsor. Hopefully, not to say that there wouldn't be a cost to students, but hopefully limiting the costs even more than the $300 so that it really would be available to anyone, even without school inter, you know, school assistance. But like I said, so far, I've had no student approach me this year to say that they wanted to go but couldn't afford to do so.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, we already had the motion and everything. All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion carries. Next item up, I ask for a motion to accept the donated items as listed.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Norwell, seconded by Hanover. All right, if you guys don't, if you guys don't want the stuff, fine. Just let me know.
You look at me, I'm like, what? I'm waiting, trying to get.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, great. Thank you. Next, ask for a motion for the surplus item listed.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Hanover.
I'll second.
Seconded by Whitman. All right, great. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Warrant boy.
Warrant boy. Okay. Warrants, number 14, 1300, 14A, 15, 15A, 15B, 1500 and warrant 16, in a total amount of $2,44,219.93.
Second.
Seconded by Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Any requests for action? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I did, before I adjourned, I just wanted to, you notice I put some bags up, some folks, and the reason I did it is I do a little part-time work up at Lowe's, which is primarily a hardware store. And if you see, if you read the information, they've been using these bags recently, and it pretty much backs up what we're trying to do here at Social Book. Lowe's is obviously, as I say, a giant hardware store, but Lowe's, we had at least four of our trades, if you think of carpentry, electrical, we don't have plumbing here, but in any case, there are at least four of our trades. And we're always talking about what we have in the future, what we're looking at. My point in bringing these in is for us to be able to use, look into using information like this when we're trying to recruit students to come to the school, to point out what the need is going to be in the future. And that's primarily why I put them out there, not specifically new business, so to speak, just information.
To show us how important locations are.
Absolutely. We talk about that all the time.
And, Mr. Chairman, what Tom did, what the bags, just for the benefit of those that don't have it in front of them, the bag reads, "By 2028, there will be more than 3 million jobs in the skilled trades that need to be filled." 3 million jobs by 2028. So there's a, Lowe's is affiliated with an organization called We Are Generation T, and I said to Tom, I would take a closer look at just what that organization was about. It speaks to what we do, like Tom said.
Then maybe Lowe's can give us a donation towards Alex, for Texas.
There we go.
There you go.
I did get out donations, there are actually, two donations that we listed, there are some donations from Lowe's. Good.
Yes, that's correct. Item number two, yes. Thank you.
All right, great. Well, Danny made the motion, second to adjourn.
I, don't everybody jump at once?
Yeah. No one wants to vote tonight.